I hereby call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the right and justice for all. Is there a motion to elect a moderator?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Enid Lapellis as a moderator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tony Rooney. All in favor of Enid Lapellis as a moderator, just say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it. Hereby appoint Frank Lido to be parliamentarian. The town clerk will read the call of the meeting.
Notice is hereby given that a town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Monroe will be held at the Monroe Town Hall, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on January 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes. One, resolution authorizing an appropriation of $1,650,000 for a town-wide emergency response radio system, a board of education radio system, and Phase 1 of the town-wide portable radio replacements, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,650,000 to finance the appropriation. And two, resolution authorizing an appropriation of $720,000 for the town's 2019-2020 vehicle replacement plan, and the purchase of trucks for a DPW, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $720,000 to finance the appropriation. And three, resolution authorizing an appropriation of $1,020,000 for a road construction and reconstruction Phase 7 project, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,020,000 to finance the appropriation. And four, resolution authorizing an appropriation and bond authorization of $215,000 for the purchase of fire equipment. Collectively, the resolutions. The full text of these authorizing resolutions are on file and open to inspection and review for any interested person at the office of the town clerk, Town Hall, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut. Ken Kellogg for Selectmen, Enid Lapellis, Town Council Chairman. Town clerk's return of notice. I hereby certify that I caused the foregoing notice of town meeting to be published in The Voices, a newspaper having a substantial circulation in Monroe on January 8th, 2020. I further certify that, on said date, I caused said notice to be set upon the Town Hall bulletin board. I further certify that all of the above acts were done at least five days before the holding of said town meeting on January 13th, 2020.
Persons eligible to vote at town meetings are, one, any person who is an elector of the town of Monroe, and, two, any citizen 18 years of age or more who jointly or severally is liable to the town of Monroe for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed brand list of the town, or who would be so liable if not entitled to an exemption under subdivision 17, 19, 22, 23, 25, or 26 of Section 12-81 of the General Statutes. I hereby notify the electorate of the town of Monroe of the following. On December 16th, 2019, the Monroe Town Council reviewed and approved the resolutions to consider and act upon. The resolution regarding an appropriation of $1,650,000 for a town-wide emergency response radio system, a board of education radio system, and Phase 1 of the town-wide portable radio replacements. The resolution regarding an appropriation of $720,000 for the town's 2019-2020 vehicle replacement plan and the purchase of trucks for the DPW. The resolution regarding an appropriation of $1,020,000 for road construction and reconstruction Phase 7 project. And the resolution regarding an appropriation of $215,000 for the purchase of fire equipment. At a town council meeting held on December 16th, 2019, a town meeting was called from Monday, January 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in council chambers of the Monroe Town Hall to hold four separate votes on the approved resolutions. Each vote will be on a different color ballot. I will read the following communications that were received from the first selectman to incorporate them into the minutes of the meeting. December 12th, 2019, to the Town Council Board of Finance and Legal Voters of the town of Monroe, pursuant to Chapter 19 of the Charter, I recommend the adoption of the bond resolution attached heretofore and entitled. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $1,650,000 for a town-wide emergency response radio system, a board of education radio system, and Phase 1 of the town-wide portable radio replacements, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,650,000 to finance the appropriation. Very truly yours, Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman. December 12th, 2019, to the Town Council Board of Finance and Legal Voters of the town of Monroe, pursuant to Chapter 9 of the Charter, I recommend the adoption of the bond resolution attached heretofore and entitled. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $720,000 for the town's 2019-2020 vehicle replacement plan and the purchase of trucks for DPW, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $720,000 to finance the appropriation. Very truly yours, Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman. December 12th, 2019, to the Town Council Board of Finance and Legal Voters of the town of Monroe, pursuant to Chapter 9 of the Charter, I recommend the adoption of the bond resolution attached heretofore and entitled. Resolution authorizing appropriation of $1,020,000 for road construction and reconstruction Phase 7 project, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,020,000 to finance the appropriation. Very truly yours, Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman. December 12th, 2019, to the Town Council Board of Finance and Legal Voters of the town of Monroe, pursuant to Chapter 9 of the Charter, I recommend the adoption of the bond resolution attached heretofore and entitled. Resolution regarding appropriation and bond authorization of $215,000 for the purchase of fire equipment. Very truly yours, Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman. On January 2nd, 2020, the Board of Finance reviewed and approved the resolutions to consider and act upon. The resolution regarding appropriation of $1,650,000 for a town-wide emergency response radio system, a board of education radio system, and Phase 1 of the town-wide portable radio replacements. The resolution regarding appropriation of $720,000 for the town's 2019-2020 vehicle replacement plan and the purchase of trucks for DPW. The resolution regarding an appropriation of $1,020,000 for a road construction and reconstruction Phase 7 project. And the resolution regarding an appropriation of $215,000 for the purchase of the equipment. There'll be four separate votes this evening, one at a time. The first vote will be a gray ballot, the second one will be a blue ballot, the third will be a green ballot, and the fourth vote will be a yellow ballot. After each vote, the registrar voters will collect the ballots. Please do not give your ballot to anyone other than the registrar voters. The results will be announced, and the four votes are concluded. First vote, I will introduce the $1,650,000 resolution for the town-wide emergency response radio system, that's the gray ballot, board of education radio system, and Phase 1 of the town-wide portable radio replacement. Resolution authorizing appropriation of $1,650,000 for a town-wide emergency response radio system, a board of education radio system, and Phase 1 of the town-wide portable radio replacements, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,650,000 to finance the appropriation. A full copy of this resolution is available at this meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to waive the reading of the entitled resolution and that its full text be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting? Do I hear a motion? Second by, motion made by Tony Scott. Second, Terry Rooney. He seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Kevin Reed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who?
Jason Mauer.
Jason Mauer. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? There being no further discussion, the vote will be taken. Use the gray ballot, wait for the registrar to come, and take, don't pass them along, wait for someone to come and take it from you.
Would you like an overview of these projects? Closing discussion?
Would you like an overview of the project? Sure. So Mr. Kellogg, the selectman.
Good evening, everyone. I think most folks here are very familiar with these items, but for the purposes of ensuring that we've provided the public ample information prior to casting your ballot, we'll go through these very quickly. Certainly don't hesitate to raise any questions you may have. On all four of the items tonight, I will go through this only once, but this does apply to all four projects this evening. These all apply to the capital budget for the current fiscal year of 1920. These were included in the annual town budget that were passed at referendum last May. These are projects that are ready to proceed immediately or in their future, and we're ready to move forward on bonding. This slide is simply to confirm that all the projects that we're talking about tonight are the ones highlighted here. They total roughly $3.6 million. We have an additional almost $1 million of projects that are also on the approved capital budget for this current fiscal year that are not part of tonight's town meeting. However, the purpose of this slide is to show that even if those were to be considered during the fiscal year, the total of all new projects where bonds would be issued when they rolled into our debt plan, that we would have sufficient room based upon other bonding that is falling off, that is being paid down, that we will maintain a stable five-year rolling average of our outstanding general obligation bonds, which is indicated in this section right here. Information that's probably most, that Board of Finance pays a lot of attention to, just to show that these are well within our appetite for bonding. So this first project, I know you've heard the heading of this about eight times now, so we won't go over that again, but this is the Public Safety and Board of Education Radio Systems. This involves three basic sections. One is a town-wide replacement of the essential infrastructure across town. This replaces end-of-life service equipment, primarily consoles in our police department and the communications center, as well as equipment at four tower locations throughout town. There's also included a board of education radio system. This is a security enhancement to allow for not just an improved radio system, excuse me, but also a simulcast system so that all schools and central office can communicate at the same time. And it also includes all the portable radios for that system because their current radios will not work on the new system. In contrast, the new radio system on the town side, existing portable radios will work on the new system. However, existing portable units will not be able to be repaired once they fail. Therefore, we are starting a rolling replacement program of the existing portables. This will be the Phase 1 of that program, the 141 batteries with that. So we'll just continue to add over time so that as radios need to be replaced, we're not doing it all at one time. Together with the projected cost of issuing the bonds, the total is a $1.65 million project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so why don't you vote, and then the registrar will take them from you.
Any further discussion? Maybe we'll ask them to add to the discussion.
Any other discussion?
No. You could touch it. You could touch it.
Can we just roll over the table?
Oh. He stone-voted three times. He stone-voted three times.
Because I would always make my own notes on the script when I go to the discussions. It's just got to be. It's there. It's just up there. It's there. Yeah, it's no different than the other one. It's been modified enough over the years, it's okay. I said it's been modified enough over the years, we can keep evolving. Pretty soon it'll be 27-page. 27-page. Google Docs. I'll tell you the problem with Google Docs is when you need to print from Google Docs, it's so cumbersome. It's like a five-click process. Print. That's how you have to do it, unfortunately. It's the only way. It's really the only way. Is there another way to do it? I don't think so. Because the, it. I don't have that. It's just, it's click to print, brings up the print screen in my office, then it prints to Adobe, and then from Adobe you get the print, and then you have to print again. But that's like... They gotta fix that.
I read the resolution for Terry Scott, and then Terry's gonna go ahead and add to the discussion.
Right. Yeah. But there should be a resolution.
He has his third pick. Terry has his third pick.
No, no, no. There's a, there's a packet.
The packet doesn't have the terms.
Forty-four. It's a good number.
Okay, we have, we have the votes. Forty-four yes, zero no. I declare the resolution adopted. So, second resolution, I will introduce a $720,000 resolution, and this is on the blue paper, for the town's 2019-2020 vehicle replacement plan and purchase of trucks for the DPW. Resolution authorizing appropriation of $720,000 for the town's 2019-2020 vehicle replacement plan and the purchase of trucks for the DPW, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $720,000 to finance the appropriation. A full copy of this resolution is available at this meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to waive the reading of the entitled resolution and that its full text be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting? Do I have a motion? So that's Kevin Reed, seconded. Second by Terry Rooney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, who is it over there?
Jason Mauer.
I'm sorry, Jason Mauer. Do I hear a second? Kevin Reed. And the resolution, okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the second project is pretty straightforward. This is the ongoing multi-year project we have to do, a rolling replacement of our large vehicles in DPW, our six-wheel and 10-wheel dump trucks. This is replacing aged equipment, increases reliability, safety, reducing breakdowns during the winter, so it improves our response. The second component is the town-wide vehicle replacement program. We've been doing this for a couple of years now, so we're getting a better position. This does include two response vehicles for the fire chiefs in Monroe and the Stepney Departments. You'll recall, we've done the Stevenson Department in a prior year. This also replaces the fire marshal's response vehicle, which is overdue, and it replaces a Parks and Recreation pickup truck, which also adds additional plowing capability, including with the bond issuance cost, it's the total $720,000. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? All right, so the vote will be taken on the blue, the registrar voters collect and count the blue ballots.
You have a vote?
Yes, I am.
So that's if you're gonna read the resolution. Or I just hereby, whatever. You can introduce the resolution yourself.
Yeah, I will. Sure, it's coming.
I mean, too. My job is to say. To say. It's like the worst. It's like 10 times worse.
Because the joke, somebody said, you talk to John, it's a pretty good one.
Okay?
Out of the files, somebody, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's right. I mean, Ken's been gentle with me because, I mean, he's been gentle with, you know, like the workers. It's just bizarre. Right. And that's not the issue, it's anything else. It's just the price. No, you're good before. We're gaining people.
Okay. The vote on this question was 45 to no. So obviously, somebody came in.
Forty-five yes, zero no, right?
Yes. Third vote, green. I will introduce the $1,020,000 appropriation for the road construction, reconstruction Phase 7 project. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $1,020,000 for a road construction and reconstruction Phase 7 project, and authorizing the issuance of the town's general obligation bonds, bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,020,000 to finance the appropriation. A full copy of this resolution is available at this meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to waive the reading of the entitled resolution? Motion by Kevin Reed, seconded by Terry Rooney. And, and I need, that's it. And then its full text will be incorporated into the minutes of the, well, not on that.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and a second to waive the reading?
Yes, I may have to hold on.
Okay. Motion made by, motion made by Kevin Reed, seconded by Terry Rooney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Jason Mauer, seconded, Terry Rooney. So, move that said resolution to adopt, and the motion was seconded. So Jason Mauer moved it, Terry Rooney seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kellogg?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is our seventh round of funding, going back from 2010, where we recognized that we needed to increase our investment in our infrastructure roadways. This is consistent with the prior appropriation levels that we've done in prior fiscal years. It will continue to improve our overall pavement condition index throughout the town, and continue to fund necessary repairs, particularly the backlog of more costly repairs and reconstruction efforts, and move towards more routine maintenance. We've been very successful in this program, as everyone is aware, and there's some statistics down there to indicate how we have been proceeding in the current fiscal year, where we've done a significant increase in addressing our roads, and we move that, we continue to move this forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So the vote will be taken on the green ballot. Registrar voters, collect and count the green ballots.
I need the resolution. I've got a second, and then Terry to discuss. She was all correct. That's right.
How are the kids going? Want to mention?
Nope. Eighth grade, seventh grade, fourth grade. Busy as heck.
Oh, yes.
It's fun. Honestly, it drives me every day. Just, just, just driving people around. It drives me every day. Well, we share. It's hard. It's just, I mean, you want to knock it, but, you know, that's not life. My, my, my middle one goes, Daddy, how come you don't ever go out anymore with your friends and join them? I said, My life revolves around you. Have time.
I support you.
Tons of sports.
I see you in the party with all the men.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the charity circuit, so like, once you're involved in that, you can't get out of it. Yeah, you go Angel Man, he's got, everybody's got charities, and once, once you do one, they come to yours, I go to yours. I don't consider that a night out. I don't even know what a night out is anymore. Friday night basketball game, I guess, with the girls, playing. They're playing basketball, all three of them are playing travel basketball, and all three of them are playing travel softball. And it's crazy. Two, two different leagues, they're playing for Jopie Hollow and travel basketball, and travel softball is going on right now, and Jopie Hollow starts soon. It's awful. It's good. Schools, diet.
The results of this vote, 46 yes, zero no. So another person came in. I declare the resolution adopted. The fourth vote's the yellow paper. I will introduce the $215,000 appropriation for the purchase of fire equipment. Resolution regarding appropriation and bond authorization of $215,000 for the purchase of fire equipment. A full copy of this resolution is available at this meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to waive the reading of the entitled resolution, and that its full text be incorporated into the minutes? Do I hear a motion? Motion by?
Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. O'Hara. Pat O'Hara, seconded by Kevin Reed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries. Do I, do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Jason Mauer, seconded by Tony Scott. Okay, and the motion was seconded by Tony Scott. Any discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is fire equipment for the Stevenson Fire Department. They've identified a need where they are in the process of having to replace certain personal protective equipment that's critical to their operations. This is to meet current National Fire Protection Association standards, and includes things like air packs, bottles, masks and compressors, along with bond issuance costs totaling the $215,000. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So there being no discussion, the vote will be taken on the yellow ballot. Will the registrar voters collect and count the yellow ballots?
We just finished our basement, and the kids already put two holes in the wall of a skateboard. I'm like, Really?
The resolutions by number are gonna be so, such a good idea.
Forty-five yes, one no. Okay, the vote on this one was forty-five yes and one no. I declare the resolution to be adopted. There being no further visits to conduct. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So Pat O'Hara, motion to adjourn, seconded by?
Seven.
Who's that?
Chris Greis.
Thank you. Okay, meeting adjourned at 7:43.